Have your attention, I'd like to call the Loudoun City Council. September meeting's ordered. We'll prove it tonight to have a couple of guests with us. Reverend Mark Esther from Loudoun County Presbyterian Church is going to lead our implication. And then, one of our very own, Wendell Curtis. He's our Veteran of Honor tonight. Machineist mate E3 from the USS John F. Kennedy, United States Navy. Thank you Wendell for your service. He's going to lead our pledge. So Reverend Lester, if you'll please, everyone stand.
Hello, it's Craig. Almighty God, we have plans for us and power to make them happen. Give legislators, executives, and government workers a knowledge of your will for the community. Let them remember that they serve a public trust beyond personal gain or glory. May they see that no city lives for itself alone, but be responsible to you for peace and well-being of all your people. And God, it's been awfully hot. We pray for gentle rains and cool breezes, and we pray for the love of God for everyone in this place. To Christ our Lord we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Seaton. Again, thank you Reverend Lester, and thank you Wendell for your service to our country. Just want to ask, is Orrin Phillips or Austin Johnson, either one of them here tonight? These are two students from Loudoun High School. I approached the building trades Kent Phillips, and he had his students make us a gavel. So Chairman, you got it here for the utility board too, Chairman Campbell, you can just make it out of hand, you know. They beefed it up a little bit, so, you know. But I asked them to make it, that was their class project, so I was going to recognize them tonight. They're not here, they were a little intimidated by coming. But it was Orrin Phillips and Austin Johnson did that. Want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Tennessee law gives every Tennesseean the right to attend city council meetings and observe how the government is doing business. We appreciate that you took time out of your schedule to be here, see how our city government works. If you don't have a copy of tonight's agenda, there's some over on the table. That's our guideline for what we'll be covering tonight. No one signed up to address the council, so the citizens' input, we'll skip right over that and go right into our agenda. And first item is to approve the minutes of our regular meeting on August 19.
Mayor, I reviewed the very detailed minutes from our last meeting, and they appear accurate to me.
Thank you, Chris. Everyone had a chance to read them, I've well read them, they seem very accurate.
I'll make a motion, we accept them.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dixon, do you have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Brewster, seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is fuel bids for September the 4th, 2019. How would you run this?
Mayor solicited four different bids. The low bid came from Rogers Petroleum, thirteen thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars. That's unleaded gasoline at a dollar sixty-seven, and Lee sold it at a dollar eighty-four.
Any questions from council about the fuel bids? You see the breakdown of prices there? If not, any motion to approve the fuel bids?
I'm agreeing.
And Councilmember Williams?
I'll second.
Councilmember Dixon, seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to authorize the purchase of UHF digital communication system from Communication Electronics Incorporated.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this dates back from last year's budget hearings, as well as our recent workshop where the police department, fire department brought forward a bid from Digital Communications Systems, Communication Electronics Inc. And these are the radios. They, what they did is they looked at the state's pre-bid purchasing site and found a vendor that could come in below that. Now, this vendor is not a state pre-bid per se, but it is below that price, and with your unanimous approval, we can choose this vendor and purchase these radios.
Okay. Any questions? You see the price listed there, seven four thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewster makes a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Dixon, seconds. Any question before we vote? As Manager Ross said, we discussed this at the workshop, and this has been discussed in budget committee meeting. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Okay, unanimous vote, carries. Next resolution is authorizing the 2007 Ford F-250 Super Cab XLT to be considered surplus and replaced. This is from the fire department, I think.
Mayor, I would like to table that too, get some more research, I'm working with Chief Rebecker. I think we're going to approach that in a different direction.
Councilmember Brewster has requested that that item be tabled. Do we need a second on that? Chris, table that.
No one makes a motion, it's tabled.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Do we need to take a vote to do that, or just table? Okay. So we'll table that for future discussion. Is it okay with you, Chief Rebecker?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, the next item is authorizing the purchase of two 2019 Dodge Durango Pursuit, all wheel drive.
Yes, this was in the budget, or partially in the budget in workshop as well. The reason I say partially is the fund 129 did approve the purchase of one police patrol vehicle. What Chief Webb, as explained in your workshop, would like to do is make the additional purchase of a second police patrol vehicle. But that those funds will come out of the drug fund, and that will require a budget amendment on your part. This resolution before you, we set that up.
Right, you see the resolution and the state bid price there, twenty-nine thousand one ninety. We just need, this resolution takes one other capital reserve fund and one other drug fund. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to purchase the two.
Councilmember James, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Dixon, seconds. Is there any discussion before we vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, no. Motion carries. Next item is authorizing the purchase of a diagnostic computer system. Notice the purchase of a 2008 Ford F-650 bucket truck.
With the tires on it.
With, yeah, that's not listed there, but there we got tires on it, I think, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misplaced the slide for that, but to explain to the audience, this has been subject to multiple meetings. LUB meeting, including city council meeting. The truck isn't present tonight, but it was on display at those previous meetings. Picture's worth a thousand words, we actually brought the bucket truck to the parking lot for inspection. The public department has budgeted for the purchase of this vehicle. It has done some comparative pricing and cannot find a vehicle better suited to its needs than the one that just happens to be housed here at LUB. The LUB board has authorized a surplus of this vehicle. So thanks to transaction, the resolution for you this evening carries forward that purchase, if you approve it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Ross. The list of price from the utilities, sixty thousand. I think everyone agreed that was.
We agree with that. Motion.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Brewster makes a motion to purchase it.
I'll second the motion.
Councilmember James, seconds. Any discussion before we vote on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, no. Motion carries. All right, next item is the purchase of a diagnostic computer system for the public works.
Yeah, this is a close call, but we're authorized to make purchases like this up to, or over and above, up to ten thousand dollars. This is nine thousand, nine thousand fifty-eight dollars, and I'm just airing on the side of transparency and bringing forward this purchase. I think it's a worthy purchase on the part of the public works department. It's an enhancement to their service, and will enable the maintenance division to read the computer systems and various vehicles we're working on. Ultimately, let's say over time, it'll be a cost savings to the department.
I think so too. I think several people I've talked to couldn't believe it happened already, and think that there's a lot of value for the public works department, this purchase. Have a motion to authorize the purchase of this diagnostic computer system?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Councilmember Dixon makes a motion. Councilmember James, seconds. Any questions?
I've got a question. Do we get a maintenance program for updates every year in this packet, or is it going to cost us?
I think it's twenty-five dollars a year. It's the same that we pay for right now for the other system. Actually look up, maybe a little bit more.
We're going to get training?
Yes, get us training, on the train.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, not, I'll ask for, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, no. Motion carries. We've got several ordinances here, one for second reading, and we've had public hearing prior to this meeting. It's an ordinance to amend Title VII Fire Protection and Fireworks of the City of Loudon Municipal Code. This is to tighten restrictions on open burning, but do the city limits of Loudon. You have the resolution in your packet. I think we went over it, and Chief Rebecker made a few changes that council had.
Make a motion to adopt them.
Councilmember Brewster makes a motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading.
I'll second.
Councilmember Dixon, seconds. We'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Bibens?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, on the first reading, we have, looks like three, four different things here. First one is to amend the zoning map of the City of Loudon, Tennessee. First one to thirteen dash seven dash two oh three and thirteen dash seven dash two oh four of Tennessee code annotated to rezoom property located in Cedar Park, drive, tax map old forty. Parcel's ninety through ninety-four. Partially eleven acres from a C2 highway business district to R3 urban residential district. This is the new R3 urban residential district that the planning commission established.
I'll make a motion for the change in the zone.
Thank you, Councilmember James. Do we have a motion to approve it on first reading? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Dixon, seconds. Any questions before we have a vote?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think that zone is actually a C4, not a C2.
Currently?
Yes.
Do you know Travis for sure? C4?
It probably is C4.
Could be. Okay, so we can make that correction on the resolution, we can make that correction.
Can you correct that type of?
It's just a type of, it's just a C4. Thank you, Grayland. Do we have a motion from Councilmember James, do we get a second?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Dixon.
Dixon, okay. Any other questions before we vote? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Bibens?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and schedule that public hearing.
Yeah, we can. There's a public hearing, we're going to have a special call meeting to address this along with the other three ordinances as well.
No.
Amen.
This one and the right way.
Yes, definitely the right way, right, those two. Let's just do that for this next one.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Vacating abandoned portion of unopened right of way or alley within the corporate limits of the City of Loudon. This is by request of Mr. Barbara Greer. It's in an open alleyway.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a motion with Councilmember?
I'll second the motion.
Councilmember James, seconds. Any questions? I think it was pretty clear what needed to be done. They roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Bibens, aye. Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
We will set a special call meeting, two public hearings to review those on second reading, six o'clock for the first one, six oh five, Monday, September 30th. And then there'll be a special call meeting at sixteen after that. September 30th, Monday, September 30th.
Thank you, sir.
Next item is an ordinance to amend Title I, Chapter I, Section 1-101 of the City of Loudon Municipal Code, which is, staff has requested council to consider moving regular meeting to the fourth Monday of the month, starting in January of 2020.
Yes, this would eliminate conflict with county commission meetings. It will also align the meetings with the Loudon Utility Board and enable the city council to have the vice meeting of the month.
Okay, this was discussed at the workshop.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Councilmember Bibens made a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Dixon, seconds. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Bibens?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then we'll, I guess we need to set up a public hearing for that in October.
There's no rush for that, because this won't impact any of your meetings until 2020, yes.
Okay.
October 21st will be the next.
Okay. Next item is amending the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget to permit the use of drug fund money to purchase that second police patrol vehicle.
Is this the last back resolution passed earlier?
Yes. Do I have a motion that we amend fiscal year budget?
No.
Councilmember Brewster makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Councilmember James, thank you. Any questions? Okay, ask for a roll call vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Bibens?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
That will also need a public hearing. Okay, next we'll have department reports. Fill in for Chief Webb. Mr. Evans, do you have anything to report?
Mayor, I have nothing. All is well.
Good. You've got big shoes to fill in, I see.
True. True.
All right. Thank you. Chief Rebecker has a special recognition?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to ask two more members to come up, Captain Bill Jeans and firefighter Luke Martin. So I just want to recognize these two members, some of you all may have heard or seen, starting with firefighter Martin. He was recognized and voted by the people of Loudon County as a 2019 New York Hometown Hero, Firefighter of the Year. So we have a certificate of achievement for that, and this is the first time a full-time member of our department's ever won that award. So congratulations, Luke.
Appreciate it.
And then Captain Bill Jeans, last week was presented the BFW Post 5150 Firefighter of the Year Award at the 9/11 service we had at the Loudon Fire Department. And they chose him over the other members of our department for his outstanding achievement and hard work in the last 12 months. So congratulations, Bill.
Congratulations, Bill.
Thank you, Chief Rebecker. Director Strokes, you have anything?
Just real quick, one of us noted the other department heads, they already worked with Chief Rebecker as far as getting a list of items, you know, facility maintenance wise. We're going to start trying to do a lot of those in the house. Just like the opportunity to take that on firsthand when we have the contract worked out. You know, I sent an email up to that note, get your list and start working on it.
So you have your new skilled laborer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Director Harold, you have anything?
Yes, sir. Just an update on things that have happened in the last couple of weeks. For River Fest, a lot of you guys were there, like maybe all of you were there in the city council meetings, the I know meeting contest.
I heard about that.
Twenty-fourth, sixteenth. Oh, Sunday was much better for you than Saturday night, I know a couple of you listeners would be agreeing. So thank you for the participation. River Fest probably was the largest, I know we say that every year because it's a crow, but with the Officer Newman and Bill, we were looking at the crowd. We estimated probably twenty-four, five thousand people there this year. I don't know where all those children come from, but man, they came, they came in their bathing suits, and they came, they were getting wet. There were two reasons for that. Our activities provided weight rise, but the big thing is the fire department. I mean, we kind of, fifteen minutes, they put about five, six hundred gallons up in the air, and those kids, they also definitely loved it. And we appreciate the fire department for doing all the work, helping make River Fest successful. Parts probably will thank you, and it's here, I want to thank you guys, and continue to do the fun, River Fest, and I think it's a good event for our community. We can't do it without the work, we can't do it without the bridge services, and the Loudon Police Department. I mean, it's a team that makes this thing happen, and I'm just very happy with it. I know it's just a year. Full attendance, I've been talking about that for the last, mentioned at the workshop about we're going to have a record year. We had, believe it or not, twenty more people last year than we have this year. Our attendance this year had fourteen thousand nine hundred thirty-seven people to go through the gates in nine weeks. Last year it was fourteen thousand nine hundred seventeen. So that's, that's still record numbers for a full twenty-three years old, with this four year old. We continue to increase, and the activity out there is great. It's a, it's a lot like the community pool surrounding the beach, and we have a lot of vendors here to visit, come in, visit the pool. And of course, we closed the pool with our lights and lights, and we had twenty-two vendors or less. That's your fuzzy, four-legged friends that we have just the dogs on it. We only allow thirty dogs max, so twenty-two's a pretty good number, and about four-ish visitors, so the animals came with the dogs. Of course, Colette's off about starting her next cruise in, it's next week, next Thursday, back to the Baptist Church. Crown Pickle Festival's coming up the last Saturday of this month, and if you see it on Facebook, you've got a big fan coming to Loudon, two-hundred-plus vendor. And hopefully, you get, again, the partners have been working with the lady that's in this paper that's promoting this thing, and I think she's been very happy with the progress of the city and how the place is working.
Yeah, she has, she's been very complimentary of the support, and she's really looking for a big event. September 28th, I think it's from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00. Thank you, Mark. We had our church had our picnic at the Linsdale Park this past Sunday. Can't tell you how many compliments I have from people saying how clean the parks are, how they kept up, and so all those involved in that, appreciate the work, Bill.
You've heard one, I'm hearing one, I'm very proud.
Ms. Curtis, do you have anything?
Sir, property tax notices went out this week, which may not be exciting for most people, but it was, it is something off the list. I actually had the opportunity to speak with someone from Chicago who purchased property here about a year ago. He got his notice in the mail, and he just called, he had some general questions about taxes and how things work, and he's very excited about building a house and moving to Loudon, and welcomed him to the City of Loudon. He said, well, he's been here a couple of times, and he's excited to retire, so that's it.
Great. I'm sure no one's excited, Nicole was about getting the tax notice.
I've got nice nickel.
Yeah.
That's what I'm here for.
Thank you. Director Brown, you have anything?
No, sir.
All right. Director Gray, left in this corner?
Yes, sir.
Don't forget, Ms. Longhan sent out a thing about blue shots in the morning at the Loudon Fire Department, right at the city, that downtown Fire Department, Public Department, starts at 6:00 a.m., 6:09, and then September 28th from 3:00 to 6:00. Thank you, Dixon. Okay, Councilmember Bibens, you have anything you need to bring up?
We're still working on the sand type contract with them. Moving right along, I hope any changes back from the sand type, I don't know yet, but we should have those before our next meeting in October, which was pushed back a week, so it won't take place until the 15th, I think, of October. And...
Did it move locations as well?
Oh, yeah, it did, inside the county office buildings is where it'll be held in October. So we're getting the annex. And I want to commend on this, Megan, could you do it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, they look wonderful. I mean, I know that they're on, I know that took a lot of time, but I like that, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
They're accurate.
They're very good.
Yep.
I try. You'll get tired and they'll get shorter, but they're good.
Anything else? Councilmember Brewster?
I would like to add something to the agenda. We sent out RFPs to the Williamson House, and basically our only response is from Van Hooch. And what Jeff is proposing is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in goods and services for that property. I would like to see us accept that, and I also would like to see us earmark that concrete or prepaved walls solely for Parks and Rec when we move forward with our election.
Anyone have a copy of the?
Anyone needs a copy of it?
Any questions about that? This will take...
This is going to get this property back on a tax roll, and any improvement, any things we want to make.
I wouldn't have a problem with that, but Tim, I would like to have a breakdown of price per cubic yard of concrete, you know, because we need to know exactly what we're getting for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If a concrete was charged at two hundred dollars a yard and going priced at a hundred and ten, I wouldn't say that he would, but it would be better if it's clarified.
We can clarify, they never find one agreement.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, just to clarify.
We can get Chris to write all that into the agreement.
I think in the future, it would probably be worth more to us than the money would be if we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars behind us. But at the same time, we need to have some kind of assurance that what we're getting.
But we had no response from the RFPs, correct?
Other than from Jeff Van Hooch. One piece of feedback I would like is, we've had some success auctioning property. Need to be a public auction, and the auction house that we've worked with and other instances is coming Wednesday and texting photographs, so if this is a route you truly'd like to go, I may want to cancel that and, or postpone it, just, I think we want your feedback on that.
If you got any feedback from the auction company about what their fees will be as far as handling the auction for us?
Seven percent. It comes right off the top, just like the Riverview lots.
Right, the buyer.
And usually, sometimes there's a seller and a buyer, see? If you don't know, that's what I'm saying, you better find out. Because I've seen it go, I've seen five percent on the seller, ten or twenty on the buyer, depending on what it is and where it is.
We all know that Jeff Van Hooch has donated a lot to this city, and it's next to his operation over there. If we can get a hundred and fifty thousand in guaranteed concrete or prepaved walls, we're going to need it when we build this election.
I'm just saying, if we haven't gotten any response to the RFPs, we can do an auction on it, we can go in and get it for a whole lot less than that.
Yeah.
If we don't take enough of this off.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you don't.
Because I mean, at an auction, that would be a lot.
If I was going to talk to him, I would be sure, and I'd know we go, what we're looking at is for is an outstanding craft right now, and anything less than that wouldn't even be acceptable, we wouldn't even consider it.
Based on what I've heard this evening, I will go ahead and postpone the auction, just to have a button to caution.
Yeah. I don't think we could get this much out of an auction.
No, the, the Riverview property went for pennies on the dollar. Sixteen acres went for thirty-nine thousand.
So what action do we need to take on this?
I think that Councilmember James has asked for some clarification. We could, we could bring it back up at the workshop in, in October and then.
That's one of the ways to number one.
Advertise the potential sale.
We've already did that. We've already advertised it. It's already been in the paper.
When was that?
Two or three months ago.
We, we put it on the website.
Okay.
But.
Oh, the R, the request for RFP?
Yeah.
Yeah, RFPs.
Well, the Parks and Rec Committee is meeting this month, and I'm sure though, this, this body has requested some, some direction and recommendations on how to move forward with Parks and Rec facilities. We've, we've set up some architectural advisors for that meeting. I'd recommend that that meeting take place, you know, and it's in full and be allowed to come back to you, to your October workshop with a recommendation, which could be coupled with a material supply agreement from Van Buisco in exchange for the real property.
But we can reset. You don't want to vote on this tonight?
I think what you're saying is you'd like to have some more specifics.
Well, I don't think the clarification would be a problem with Van Buisco. I mean, it's just a situation that we just like to have. But I can't perceive it being a problem.
No, it shouldn't be. And that can be in our final draft, Chris, right?
Yes.
Market price here is concrete.
Yes, we'll have a, we'll have, we can have a draft agreement prepared for your October meeting.
Okay. If we have that, there's nothing really that we need to do tonight with this.
We need to vote on it to accept it and then do the final thing.
I've got the direction. All the, all the pecking will be in motion.
Okay. Now, would you take a vote on it, that's what? Want to take, basically your vote would be to approve?
We've been sitting on it for, it's been out for four months, three or four months now. I think Jeff's been out. And Jeff can go ahead and make his plans to move forward with his building if he knows that we're gonna move in that direction. Can't see putting it off month after month when we, out of the final draft.
I don't, I don't see, see you put off any further. You're gonna be prepared for your next meeting?
What, what, why can't we be prepared now? Why can't we vote on it, say this is the route we're going?
Well, well, a contract for real property has to be in writing. It has, the real property has to be described. And in terms of a framework, you can certainly approve this tonight. We'll put together, put together the full agreement for your approval of this meeting.
All I'm, all I'm gonna do is get approval on this RFP that he submitted, which no one else responded.
I see.
Let's prove this.
Going in that direction.
What you're basically saying, you just want tentative approval tonight. T tentative approval tonight.
Yeah, that we can move forward.
Yeah, we can move forward.
We can accept that this RFP.
Finalized in October.
Yeah.
That's the, I was telling you.
Discuss the role.
And it's, you, you can have that ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So there's really no action when you take, it's not gonna, I guess, people have it ready, October meeting?
I think we need to vote to approve this. So again, we're working on it.
Well, I mean, if, if the council wants to express its unanimous approval of, of this request for purchase, then, then you can, you can do that. But we'll come back with, with a, with a contract that, that will actually lead to a closing. This, approval of this document is, is not going to automatically result in transfer of the property to management.
Right, or to realize that.
Right. You want to make that in your motion?
I'll make a motion. Does this RFP move forward?
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Councilmember James, second. Any question about the direction? So this is just giving them the authority to move forward and get the contract together?
I'm doing it.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, no. Okay, motion carries. Councilmember Dixon, do you have anything? Councilmember James?
I've got a couple of things, mostly comments. I would like to thank the Fire Department and American, and the DFW for putting on the nine-one-one community. Y'all did a great job. We certainly appreciate that. Also, I would like to thank the Police Department for your speed control. It's working, believe me, it is working. You don't believe me, just get on Highway eighty-two and go down eighty-two, you'll find out. Somebody passes you, we'll be allowing you to stop.
Have they got you yet?
Yeah. Highway patrol, I mean.
You don't bury your truck.
He didn't take the seat, he took the highway patrol.
I was talking to Johnny on the phone. He was on the phone. PHP got by me on the phone.
Yeah, I'm a career clown.
Thank you, Johnny. Anything else? Only thing I have is the mention of the Pride Pickle Festival and Blue Shots, and just kudos to whoever's doing the website now. I think if you hadn't seen the city council, the City of Loudoun website, it's a lot better now. The agenda's on there, the minutes are on there. So, you know, people can look at the website, see what's coming up on the agenda, and the minutes are accurate and up to date. So, if you haven't checked it out, it's, it's a lot better. I don't know if that's Steve responsible for that now, who that is, Mayor Ross, but they've done a good job of that.
It, it, it's a team effort. Everybody's working hard. A lot of it is at the request of the citizenry, and we're doing our best to be responsive in that regard.
Last thing is, I'm sure people's drove by the Hutch property. You can see a lot. Lots went on there. They're making good progress. Any other comments? Mayor Ross, do you have anything?
Yes, I would just like to thank all departments for, for their attendance, that those that were able, those does job committing to attend nine eleven ceremony last week. It was fantastic. The DFW obviously did a great job organizing, but I think kudos goes to our public safety departments. Fair Webb's not here this evening. He, he gave a fine presentation. And Chief Brubaker, that was a moment that counts, and you knocked it through the park. Thank you, sir. You and, and your team made me proud to live in the City of Loudoun.
I'll do again next week.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, he's been anywhere in. Good job.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Would you like to announce the public hearings on those other two ordinances at the, for the October meeting?
Yeah, we can do, the, I had a question about the, the regular meeting in October. Has it moved to Tuesday? Since fifteenth is, isn't that a holiday? Columbus Day a holiday?
Not for the City of Loudoun.
Not for City of Loudoun, okay. Okay, so they're still going on Monday. Okay, we'll do that six oh five, let's know, say six twenty and six twenty-five. Six twenty and six twenty-five. Thank you, Chris. Now, don't forget that there'll be a public hearing, six and six oh five, Monday, September thirtieth. And then a special call city council meeting to approve those ordinances, six ten, Monday, September thirtieth. Okay? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.